Monty likes that last minute. Monty says that last minute is always so long.
Nine o'clock, we'll call the county board meeting order and we'll begin with the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, welcome everybody that's here this morning. Roll call, Beth.
Sure, Commissioner Benoit. Commissioner Heinem.
Present.
Commissioner Pop.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Here.
Approve or amend the agenda. I see we got some edits.
Yes, sir. So with all the developments in the legislature, we invited Grady Harn to do an update for us. If we could add that Mr. Chair is the first thing at nine oh five under County Administrator, a legislative update.
Okay.
Grady? Next item, last item under, I'm sorry. Let's add two more items under Administrator. One would be the resolution regarding the CIP bonding petition.
Where do you want that?
That would be right after the APO, APO cost sharing arrangement. Right after the APO cost sharing arrangement. And then last, my last addition for Administrator would be a brief update on the retiree dental insurance. Retiree dental insurance, the last item under Administrator. And then the other item to add is under Krista Bird, County Engineer, the final payment for the Maywood Township Bridge replacement. So that's all. And I think there's another item up here, but that's Community Health Board.
Mr. Chair, if we could also please add, I asked Michelle if she could give us an update in regards to the One Water One Plan, St. Cloud, potential deed restrictions, and I wanted to see what the other counties are talking about in SWCD. So if we could put a spot on there for her to give us a brief update, I'd appreciate it.
Where would you like that?
Maybe we could add that under Administrator also, under retiree.
Sure, okay.
After retire dental stuff.
One. Deed restrictions, okay.
Okay, One Water One Plan, St. Cloud.
Under Monty's.
Under Monty's.
Okay.
And I'll move for approval of the amended agenda, oh, sorry.
I just wanted to make a note that I do got a prior commitment, I gotta leave at ten fifteen. So if I gotta get up and leave, just so everybody knows.
All right, I'll move for approval of the amended agenda, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve for the, of the amended agenda. Any other discussion or questions?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. County Board means our broadcast live and video recorded on YouTube. Please restrain from speaking from the audience areas and come to the podium so that viewers can hear you. The county board observes the Robert Rules of Order for its meetings. So please obtain the board's chair consent before addressing the county board. Public comments are generally reserved for open forum segment or public hearings. However, public comments on the agenda items may be allowed at the discretion of the board chair. As we begin today, please turn off your cell phones or turn them to vibrate. Thank you. Consent agenda items one through.
Mr. Chair, you want to go back to open forum?
Oh, yes, open forum. Okay, thanks. Consent agenda items one through twelve.
Move approval.
I'll second it.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda items one through twelve. Any discussion?
I'd like to pull five into N and twelve, please.
I'll amend my motion.
I will also, Mr. Chair.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to approve items one through four and six through eleven. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Number five?
It's more of a, just a question for Christine on liquor licenses. Do all of the underlying government entities have paperwork that they turn in to you? And then once that comes in, then it's brought to this board to approve?
So the townships you're talking?
Yeah, township, cities, whatever.
So the owners need to go to the townships first and then it comes to us?
Okay. I'll move number five.
I'll second.
Number five has been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Number twelve?
Number twelve, it is a human services one and, and again, a question for Sandy. On, on the front, it says it's grant funded for the source of funding. But then when you get into the contract, it says county shall pay people incorporated and amount not to exceed twenty thousand at their rates described in. So it, this is grant funded and we're sure this is grant funded or this contract can go away if the grant funding from the state does not come through?
We've been assured it is grant funded and that we repay it and be reimbursed. So we've been assured that it is there.
Okay, I'll move number twelve.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve number twelve. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Monty Henley.
Commissioner. Thank you, sir. I want to ask, is anyone here for a ditch authority? Just want to make sure, because it's not till tonight. Okay, just want to check first.
Thanks.
All right, let's turn it over to Grady if we could, Mr. Chair.
Welcome, Brady. Hang on.
Hang on.
Hold on, Brady.
Okay, this is a new problem. Sorry? Different speaker.
It's a choice at the bottom, okay.
Okay, Grady, let's give it a try now.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioner.
Good morning.
Hear me?
Yep.
Yes, thank you.
Loud and clear.
Excellent, well, thank you for having me here today. As you're well aware, a session came and ended on the nineteenth at midnight, the constitutional deadline to adjourn. I'll give a little bit of an update later on where we stand today as far as a special session. Most of the bills, including transportation, taxes and bonding, and all the other big budget bills did not pass during the regular sessions. So that requires the governor to call a special session from which they've been working over the last couple of weeks at the work group level. They can no longer be conference committees or the, the normal committees as in regular sessions. So they're calling them work groups for each major budget bill. And they've been working over the last couple of weeks to get those in a place where they can agree. If they can't agree on the bills, they want up to leadership, to the governor and the majority leader, the speaker. And, and they, they would resolve the issue so that it can get to the floor in a special session. It's, it's been an interesting couple of weeks. A lot of the work groups have been meeting behind closed doors. And we saw a lot of stall tactics, not a whole lot of action. But we do have now in place most, every budget bill except for bonding at the agreed upon level. One issue that we're watching closely is just because the leadership made agreement on a lot of these bills, it doesn't necessarily mean they have the votes to pass them off the floor. So we saw that over the last weekend, I think on Saturday, the tax bill was released. And both of the tax chairs indicated they will not vote for it on the floor because it was cut down to basically eight items, taking out all of the local projects that were agreed upon. So we'll watch how that plays out and whether or not the leadership can get their caucus members to come to a consensus. But that is one concern that we'll be looking at and one that is, is kind of stalling the special session announcement by the governor. I will go a little bit into, so basically, they must pass a budget by June thirtieth or the government shuts down. On June first, agency notifications want out, alerting agencies that the government may shut down. So they should begin preparations. The governor had announced that he was looking to make an announcement Monday morning as far as when a special session would take place. However, like many deadlines this session, that came and is now beyond us. And so it's looking and leadership is kind of in talks that, you know, there could be one this weekend, there could be one next week. But kind of my betting factor would be that they would have one by the end of the month, preventing the, the budget shutdown. So as these conversations take place, mostly behind closed doors, leadership for each body will determine whether or not they have the votes to move anything forward. There are a couple contentious things aside from primarily now the tax bill is, is the, the major hookup. But there are some other contentious things like the immigration or healthcare for minor immigrants that are at the discussion level and debate. So basically, like I said earlier, agreements have been made on everything except bonding. We anticipate that that will probably be a last minute or, at the very last hour of, of the special session is when they would bring forth the bonding bill. So jumping into the three kind of areas of focus for Benton County, primarily we are working the tax route for the government center exemption. In the tax, in the tax bill, as I mentioned, it was narrowed down to just eight items, no local projects. It was indicated by Chair Ress that she worked multiple routes to try and find a way to let counties do this on their own. Since I, I think by law you already can, it's just a matter of the third parties and coordinating the expenses to then get credited. She did say she ran into some problems trying to resolve that this session, but she's committed to continuing to work on it. There were approximately two hundred million dollar, dollars of requests for construction exemptions. So as you can see with the, the budget, anticipated budget deficit and looking across the board at, at making cuts to government, that was a challenge this session. So we will continue to have those conversations and monitor them and make sure that Benton County is, is front and center as those decisions are being made over the interim. On the transportation side, which we didn't really, our bill was, most of the general obligation bonding bills for Highway one are, are general obligation bonds, so it comes from the general fund. However, because of the news that bonding was going to likely be a smaller bonding package this session, we, we went down the avenue of transportation to see if there could be any funds that were set aside that could put, we can put towards this project. So wanted to thank the commissioners that we had at the Capitol. We had a visit for, on May first and again on the thirteenth with the Benton County delegation. And we had very good conversations with the chairs of transportation, bonding and taxes. And we'll continue to have those conversations. But it was very helpful to have the commissioners present and wanted to thank Monty and Chris for the, the one pagers. They've been very helpful in, in spreading Benton County's requests. On transportation, I'll note that they, that bill was put forth. Again, there were no local projects included in it, decided at the leadership level, which was very disappointing. I did hear note yesterday that Senate Republicans, so basically, they were looking at, in, in bonding, they were looking at trying to include transportation infrastructure. It will primarily go to PFA, but they asked for an additional three hundred million. I spoke with the bonding lead in the Senate last night and he said that's all high level water and infrastructure projects. So no earmarks specifically to local projects. But I did ask him, when I called him, I said, is there any way out of this three hundred million? Can we get a little bit to Benton County? And unfortunately, he said that none of it would be earmarked to specific counties. So then again, looking at bonding, the number that is being talked about initially, Senate Democrats wanted a one point three billion dollar bonding bill this session. It's basically been agreed upon that they're looking at seven hundred million dollars. And we will see how those conversations come to fruition amidst all of the issues they're trying to resolve right now. But again, the seven hundred million dollar bill we were informed will not include local projects. One thing to note is that lawmakers, if, if bonding is not passed this session, they're looking at doing at least a one point one billion dollar package next session, which is the typical bonding year. And so we will continue to push hard and get Benton County front and center. With that, I think that's the recap. I will keep everyone informed as far as when they decide to announce the special session. And again, they have to do this by the end of the month in order to prevent a government shutdown.
You open any questions? Did we lose him?
Nope, I'm here.
Okay. Anybody got any questions?
Mr. Chair, Grady, thank you a lot for your support and your help. We have spent a lot of hours down there at the Capitol. I wish we could have some better news.
Yeah, I agree. Mr. Chair and Commissioners, one thing that I, I spoke with Representative Schultz a few weeks back and, you know, was pushing hard again for these projects. And one thing that he came back and said was this was this, this is the season of disappointment. And I think that is probably well said for a lot of counties across Minnesota.
Thank you, Grady, for your update, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks. Then we'll move on. Let's move to our MCIT update. Crazy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, Tammy, don't get one.
Good morning.
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 Morning, Chair. I am, Richard Mehe, I'm a risk management consultant with MCIT. Pleased to be with you this morning, being respectful of a, a full agenda. I'll be as politely brief as possible, but if there's something I say that sparks a question, please chime in. We'll see if we can get those answered. I'm gonna, it is not my intention to walk through this verbatim, this handout here for the folks tuning in remotely or in the audience, but we will highlight each box a little bit. So I'll start off by just saying what MCIT is and probably what MCIT isn't in the same regard. So we are a risk sharing pool. We are your insurance entity, but we are not an insurance company. So there's a lot of synonyms and words that we use differently than the private insurance world. We take a contribution as opposed to a premium. What we do with that is it's invested, we use it to pay claims. And then hopefully at the end of our coverage term, instead of a policy term, we return a dividend if things are financially prudent to do so. We don't have a growth mode, we don't have a profit model. MCIT is a, a joint powers entity, so we exist simply to provide coverage to our members. We have about five hundred members, eighty-one of the eighty-seven counties. That's the number we like from the county level. Once we get to five hundred, there will be no confetti or celebrating. It's simply egg societies, soil and water conservation districts, historical societies and the like. Again, we, we simply exist to provide coverage. The number of members is dependent on the number of members. So we, in the private world, they would call us a group captive. If things don't go well for one of those members, those people are expelled. We don't do that at MCIT either. So again, by way of refresher or, or introduction or reminder, that's what we are, that's what we aren't. We're lucky and fortunate enough to have Benton within our pool for the last forty years. MCIT started in nineteen seventy-nine when the insurance and reinsurance world was very disruptive to municipalities and this risk pool concept kind of started. So we've been around for forty-six years, Benton's been in it for forty, so we are greatly appreciative of that. Our ask of commissioners is engagement. We love questions, we like to ride the horse looking forward. What makes us difference, different than other insurance entities is we really focus on risk management and loss control, meaning we like to be predictive of those problems. If we see an issue with one of our members, we get to talk about that with the rest of them and try to knock those things down before they happen. So if you have coverage questions or conundrums, projects that are coming down the pike that you're worried about insuring or covered, get us involved right away and we can start talking about it. As we'll get into the stats and graphs, again, being mindful of the people who don't have the graphics in front of them. The amount that we are insuring as a risk pool has grown significantly. We are insuring significant dollars amount, eight billion dollars, eight million dollars in total coverage. If we look back to twenty twenty-one, from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, when we were seeing, I'm sorry, I'm gonna talk about reinsurance to start things off, I got ahead of myself a little bit. MCIT has to purchase reinsurance as a pool. We are a self insured group. It's a little savings account that we pay our claims out of, return the dividend out of. But if we have a catastrophic, catastrophic event, that taps into reinsurance that we purchase. When we are seeing the increased costs to purchase reinsurance, what we did was we raised that bar as high as we could comfortably do so, so we don't have to tap into that. What that meant was saved us MCIT premium. Again, we pay premiums, you folks pay contribution. But that was able, we took on more risk, so we don't have to tap into that as often. That was a lever that we pulled to try to keep costs down to our, our membership. Now I'm gonna jump into total insured figures. So as we tickle nine, over nine billion in total insured values, that's getting to be a pretty significant number. If we look back to twenty twenty-one, that number was at like six and a half. From twenty-one to twenty-two, it went to seven. From six, six to seven, this trend line is starting to look a little bit too much like a hockey stick and that's just indicative of the world that we're living in. It costs more to replace when we update our buildings and the like, it costs more to do so, it costs more to insure them. So this is a, a graph that would be parallel or kind of something similar that you would recognize in your private life as well as your professional life. If I jump over and talk about what rates have been doing, we're still kind of normalizing and, and dealing with some fluctuation coming off of, of COVID and the pandemic. When folks worked from home, they weren't slipping and falling in the parking lot as frequently. As we get more normalized with that, our workforce is starting to see more injuries back to where we would expect. And on the property and casualty and liability side of things, when things break, when automobiles strike things or get struck, it costs more to replace and repair those as well. So again, those are some things that we are constantly dealing with. The dividend is called out. Again, we take a contribution, risk manage, pay claims, we do that in-house and then hopefully return a dividend. It is not our intention to take a massive contribution, hope everything goes well and then give you a bunch of money back. That's not, we would like to keep those extremes as low as possible. So again, the dividend is returned when it's proven financially responsible to do so. But we don't hedge on the front end just so that we can give money back and make it feel like we've won in that regard. I do want to call out the, the bottom box there, cyber liability. This has been a tricky peril to get our heads wrapped around. It's been very tricky for the industry to predict and ensure. Risk and insurance and safety for that matter operate on two very simple metrics, frequency and severity. How often and how bad? Typically, when things happen more often, they get worse. This has been a pleasant box to talk about as of late. Although our frequency is up, meaning we are having more instances of cyber and data issues, the severity has gone down. This can be explained by twenty twenty-four, we did not experience in any of our membership a ransomware claim. So when, when we have inclement weather or hail on the way, there's very little we can do. We don't pull the gymnastics mats off the floor and throw them on the roof to save the shingles. But when we have cyber issues and claims and, and events in, in our neighbors' world, we can pay close attention to that and take action in our house as well. So through education, through sophisticated tools, through wonderful organizations like Minkitla and Minute and those other organizations, we try to run parallel with them and, and really appreciate their efforts. So through education, through technological advancements, we can hopefully continue to drive these claims and the severity of them down. Lastly, I'll talk, I'll talk for a moment on the, on the back page here. When we look at workers' compensation, you get a score. You get a numerical number that's awarded to you based on how you've done historically. It's a really an interesting formula. It's a quarterback rating, slugging percentage, golf index, all rolled into, into one. And it's sticky, meaning it stays with you for a little bit. So if you have a great year, it doesn't move the needle significantly. If you have a terrible year, it doesn't move the needles significantly. Yeah, a good score is one. Benton County sits at one point zero two eight. So just a little bit of room for improvement, but if we really kind of dig into the numbers, these numbers are generated off of, of three years. Twenty-five is still going, twenty-four is, is too new, so you're looking at twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-one. If you take a peek at the number from twenty twenty-one, that one starts with a one, the other three before it start with zeros. So greener grass is, is coming, so congrats there. And one point zero is a, is a fantastic score as well. So what that means, it translates to real dollars. When we get that thing to start with a zero, you start count, costing less per injured person. So I appreciate that, you're in a wonderful spot there. Some other numbers to call out there, just, we have, you know, claims per year and amounts that get paid out. My eye tends to go to law enforcement liability significantly higher than most, and that is for obvious reasons. Twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five, when those folks are called into action, typically something isn't going great and we need some intervention there. So that is not an MCIT or, or Benton specific issue, that's, that's how the world works in, in law enforcement. Just a couple of things to, to wrap up with employee assistance program. So we are happy to co-sponsor that and, and offer that not only for county employees but elected officials. So grief counseling, marriage counseling, financial counseling, those types of things are kind of the obvious ones. But there are other niche things. If you have someone new to leadership that hasn't been in that position before and they are having to have difficult conversations, for the first time, we have folks that can help and kind of counsel through that and provide some development and education as well. So it isn't just for the tragic events, it's also when we are trying to grow and, and increase our, our leadership abilities for our staff. Also want to call out patrol, peace officers, accredited training online. Anytime we can get more folks helping out in the law enforcement world, that's just a benefit to our community. Benton's been a steward of that program for fifteen years running and have gotten dozens of folks through that. So MCIT's happy to partner and, and co-sponsor that as well. So again, that's kind of a, a condition of the counties as far as the state of the state. Benton's in a really wonderful spot, we appreciate the partnership. And again, we love riding that horse looking forward. So if we can talk about issues and concerns as they're in development or coming down the pike, that's when we would love to be in, involved. With that, I'll pause for any questions if you have.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
What, what is the average county out there and how many total counties again?
We have eighty-one of the eighty-seven.
Okay, and then what's the average number?
As far as?
The loss.
Ah, for a mod rate? That can vary. Again, we are scored based on our pool, based on our job classifications and run. Comparison is the thief of joy. I would just sit with one point zero is a very good number to have.
Okay, so there's a lot of counties that are a lot worse off?
Yes, I don't always get to have this pleasant of a, a news to deliver.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Monty, I think this was, this wasn't the reward, an award that Benton County received through.
That is true, you're right. Recently, under the work comp category, yes, county of the year on work comp, yep.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the update.
Good news anyway.
Consider a resolution supporting APO cost share.
Mr. Chair, I think it's best to defer to Commissioner Kapinski and Brian Gibson to address this issue if I could.
Yeah, absolutely. Brian, I'll let you go, but I, 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 I will brief the, the board on this. This has been a resolution that we've been working on for, what, two years or more? Probably even more.
That's right.
Yeah, and it's been very contentious, but, uh, I think we came to an agreement between all parties of the APO that this works best for, for everybody involved.
Uh, thank you, Commissioners. Uh, pleasure to be here. As, uh, Commissioner Kapinski said, uh, this is a, an agreement that the APO Board arrived at, uh, recently. And because the agreement would potentially commit each jurisdiction to future funding obligations, um, and the APO Board has no authority to do that, we need to come to you, each jurisdiction, and ask you to approve the agreement. So, um, the agreement concerns specifically, uh, Beltline Corridor projects. So anybody who's unfamiliar with the Beltline, it's a circular roadway that encompasses the St. Cloud urban area. It literally allows you to travel around the urban area without going through the middle of it, which is the most congested and we get the most delay and the most accidents, uh, at that, in those locations. Um, so it, uh, I can go into a lot of technical details, but suffice to say, for this presentation, we expect it to result in, uh, improved mobility, so more people traveling and a lot less delay. So more people traveling, taking less time. Um, so the, um, in fact, the CASA twenty-nine extension from Mayhew Lake Road to Golden Spike is part of, of the Beltline. Um, so important to understand, for any roadway project, there are five basic steps that you go through. One is planning and concept development. That's where we live. We're a planning agency. Uh, number two is environmental assessment, so you have to do an EIS or an EA. You have to estimate the probable environmental impacts of any project, uh, and then let that influence the final design. So step three is final design. Um, once you have final design, you move into step four, which is right-of-way acquisition. So you purchase any right-of-way that you need. And then step five is construction. That's, uh, the big, the big kahuna there, big money. Um, so in twenty twenty-four, the APO Board, uh, and I will say, uh, Commissioner Kapinski was a key part of this, sort of spearheaded a, a goal of getting to a, a cost-sharing agreement, basically asking the question, look, the Beltline is, it's not a jurisdictional project, it's regional. It's a regional facility. Everybody's going to use it, everybody's going to benefit. Shouldn't we all be sharing in the costs of it? Um, and so the two questions were, uh, which part of that project development five-step process, which parts should be cost shared regionally, and which should be solely the responsibility of the, the jurisdiction that's building the thing, right? And so that's one question. And then the second question is, if we're going to cost share parts of it, how? What is the formula? How do we distribute those costs across the region? And so, um, the Board, uh, asked me to take it to our technical advisory committee for a recommendation, and in August, they came up with a recommendation of, uh, the following. And I'm going to, sorry, I'm going to read this, uh, because the details are important. So, um, the cost of the planning phase of any Beltline projects would be cost shared among the jurisdictions according to the normal APO formula. So basically, nothing there changes. If it's planning, we distribute the costs based upon our normal formula. That's, that's the way it's done now. Okay. Um, secondly, when federal or state funds are being used for a tier-one environmental impact statement, the local match cost would be shared among the jurisdictions, with the implementing jurisdiction paying fifty percent of those costs, and then the other fifty percent distributed among all of the jurisdictions of the APO. And it's important to note.
Including the, 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 we'll, we'll say the, the part of the Beltline or part of the, uh, APO that pays a fit first fifty percent, they also are sharing in that other fifty percent.
Correct. So if a jurisdiction, if, let's say their normal share is, uh, ten percent, uh, of, of the APO distribution. So they pay the first fifty percent, if they're the implementing jurisdiction, and then they pay their normal ten percent of the other fifty percent, okay? Um, yep. And then for, uh, tier-two EISs and all other aspects of project development, so design and right-of-way acquisition and construction, that is solely the responsibility of the jurisdiction that's building that piece of the Beltline, okay? So that's the recommendation of the TAC. So, um, the natural question is, what's the difference between a tier-one and tier-two EIS? So a tier-one EIS is generally a, a bit more general, so you're still looking at various alignment alternatives. Um, a tier-two EIS tends to be more detailed and focused on one alignment. And importantly, at the end of a tier-two process, you get to what we call thirty-five percent design. Most importantly is, once you get to the end of a tier-two EIS, uh, the federal government expects you to have money budgeted to build the thing. So from the federal government standpoint, if we're giving you money to do this project, we expect you to do, to do the project. And so when you get to the end of that tier-two EIS process, you need to have money budgeted. We need to see that you're serious about this, and this is actually going to happen. Otherwise, we're going to ask for our money back. So, again, important to understand that the cost-sharing agreement is only for tier-one EISs, not for tier-two. And the, and the reason basically is that, um, if a, let's say jurisdiction A, uh, is going to build a piece of the Beltline, and everybody cost participates in the EIS, but then jurisdiction A does not move forward, and the federal government says, wait a minute, we, we helped you pay for that, we want our money back. Are all the jurisdictions then on the hook to help repay, right? Through no fault of yours, it's, you, you didn't do anything wrong, right? Jurisdiction A didn't move forward. So the TAC felt like they didn't want to, anybody to be on the hook for somebody else's faults, basically. Um, okay, so a specific example then would be, let's say we're talking about a, a million-dollar tier-one EIS. What is Benton County's obligation on that? So, um, if we're using federal funds, it's going to be eight hundred thousand federal, two hundred thousand local. Fifty percent of that is going to be, uh, paid by the, the implementing jurisdiction. So if that's not Benton County, that's somebody else. They're paying the first hundred thousand. And of the remaining hundred thousand, um, your normal share of our cost distribution formula is three point eight six percent. So you would pay three thousand eight hundred, uh, three thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars of a one million dollar EIS. So with that, do you have any questions?
Well, from, from my standpoint, we, this took a long time to come up with, and, you know, I think it's, City of St. Cloud is, is definitely, uh, we've got the belt, we've got the bridge right now, the, the EIS for the bridge, and that's where we come up with that million dollars, because that's the biggest one that we've got right now. So, and, and arguably, that bridge is going to help everybody, including Benton County, coming into the airport and, and coming in our county from that area. So, um, paying three thousand dollars for that EIS to keep the eight hundred thousand of federal money is, is an absolute win for our county.
Mr. Chair, so I've sat in some of these meetings too with Commissioner Kapinski, and it was very contentious, very contentious, right, Brian? I mean, no one could really agree on what cost sharing, you know, who should pay for what.
Yep.
But I'm glad you guys actually worked it out though and got it figured out. It's very important to Benton County too.
Well, and I, I mean, my impression of the contention is that a lot of it is fear, right? Fear of the future, fear of the unknown, what might happen, right? And then we're suddenly on the hook. But I think this agreement is, is simple enough and clear enough. Everybody is, understands and is, is pretty much okay with it, so.
And not only that, it, it allows, it allows every jurisdiction to get on board with somebody else's project, uh, not only a little bit financially, but more importantly, um, you know, signing letters of support for them to gain federal money and state money.
Okay. Yeah, looking like a no or a win-win for most, most of the people.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll second.
Most men made in second to, uh, to approve the resolution supporting the APO cost-sharing agreement for the Beltline corridor. Any other discussion?
Other than thank you, Brian, thank you, Commissioner Kapinski, because you're chair of the APO, for going through and doing all of this for us.
Thank you.
With that, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Carried.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Brian.
Monty.
All right, well, Mr. Chair, of course, as you know, we received a valid petition regarding the proposal to issue capital improvement plan bonds. So a possible question before you is, does this county board wish to refer this matter to the voters at an election? And do you wish to do that during a special election or a, the general election, which will come up in November of twenty-six? Uh, so that, in the event that you wanted to refer this matter to a special election soon, uh, we did, uh, with Michelle Meyer's assistance and Mary Ipple from the Taft Law Firm, drafted the attached resolution, which we'd call a special election for August. So that's as soon as that we could have a special election. As, as I've communicated to you all, uh, is when, uh, once you adopt the resolution, that election must occur within seventy-four days. Now you may think, well, could that mean we could have an election tomorrow? Well, actually, no. It sounds like in talking to Christine, that they need every bit of that seventy-four days to prepare. One of the big drivers is, as Christine tells us, if you have a special election in August, you must begin absentee voting in June twenty-seventh. I think it's forty-six days before the election. So, so if you, if you're inclined to have a special election in August, time is of the essence, so, uh, we would ask you to consider this resolution today. I included, Mr. Chair, in your packet, other special election dates. You can see here from Secretary of State's office, uh, those can occur, uh, February tenth, I'm sorry, uh, August twelfth, November fourth, and you can see then the two thousand twenty-six dates, February tenth, April fourteenth, May twelfth, August eleventh, and November third. Those are the allowable special election dates. Um, in case you had a question about the contents of the sample ballot, uh, I, again, conferred with Mary Ipple, and they send this statute, which is in your packet, two seventy-five dot six oh, which essentially dictates the contents of the ballot question. So if you're wondering why it says what it says, it's because the statute says so. Um, so, Mr. Chair, I think that's the question for you this morning is, uh, does this board wish to refer this matter to voters? And if so, uh, when would that be yours, when, when would that be your choice? Uh, the information I can give you, as you think about that, um, I should mention to you that, uh, this is under Minnesota statutes three seventy-three dot four oh. If you choose not to refer this matter to the voters, uh, you may not, um, have a new public hearing on a proposed issue bonds for three hundred and sixty-five days. So if you do not refer it to the voters, you may not have another, uh, public hearing on a proposed issue debt until the passage of three hundred and sixty-five days. So, um, I'll, I know Michelle is here and here, and I know, um, Pete's here and Evan are here, if you have questions of us.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, obviously, uh, August, uh, special election, I think, is, it's not doable on my side. Um, I, I also believe that we should, um, potentially think about where we're at and what our options are after this. Um, there's a lot of money that was left on the table. I get it. Um, I think the preliminary numbers, Pete, maybe you can ask, are roughly twenty-four million versus the twenty-nine seven? So, uh, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to table this until we can have a call or something like that to talk about it. Obviously, I'm not in favor of a special election.
I'll second the table, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we, we got a motion and a second for tabling?
Mr. Chair, if I could just add?
Can I make a discussion on a table later?
Okay.
If I can say, at some point, I think the Board should have formal action if you're, uh, to reject all bids. I think that's out of courtesy to the contractors. I think that's, that's important. I think also too, there ought to be at some point some formal action, whether or not you're going to refer the matter to the voters or you're not. So a couple of questions, I think, which should require some formal action at some point.
Mr. Chair, I'll break my own rule on the discussion. Commissioner Kapinski, would you consider keeping the June tenth meeting?
Absolutely.
Advertised, and maybe that's the day we sit down and figure out what our options are. And if that's the case, in, include it in your table.
I'll include that in my table.
Also include it in the second and ask you to call a question, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, so I guess when you go to set commes of the whole, you can decide if you want that. There was originally going to be a special board meeting on tenth to consider the, the bids.
Right.
Uh, so that was kind of marked out on the calendar. You could keep that either as a special meeting or a commes of the whole. I guess when we get to the commes of the whole, you can decide that, how you want to have that posted, so.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to table to June tenth?
June tenth.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried.
A quick wrap-up, we'll loose end on the retiree dental insurance of.
Yep.
We said that we would contact Guardian and find out if they had a preventative plan to offer those retirees. The answer is yes. I, I wish I could say it was a little more affordable, it was a little cheaper, but, uh, I know, for example, the, the premium cost for the full comprehensive package that we get from Guardian is about thirty dollars a month, and the preventative package is about twenty. So it's saving about ten dollars a month. Uh, so through our, uh, provider, MedSurety, if I'm saying that correctly, Beth, MedSurety will contact those retirees and let them know that they have access to this plan and what the premium is. So, again, there is, there is a preventative plan that they can purchase if they wish to.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yes, sir. Sandy from Human Services.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I believe we got Michelle to do an update.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right.
Good morning.
Morning.
All right, so we've been having discussions, um, with the parties of these one watershed one plans, uh, regarding kind of the forms we want to see with regards to contracts, um, follow-up that we want to have with owners, property owners that develop projects on their land, uh, with those grant funds. So one of the issues that has arisen is a deed restriction. And the, the projects typically require that property owner, if they receive those funds, to maintain those projects for a minimum of ten years. So we usually have an agreement that requires that compliance. The problem comes in when there's a change of ownership on that property. How do we compel a new owner to abide by those maintenance requirements? We've invested money, we want to make sure that those improvements maintain themselves. Well, with the help of the property owner. So the question is, do we require deed restrictions for all projects? Do we require them for any projects? And it becomes really a risk assessment. Um, the, you know, it can be the dollar amount that's spent, it could be, you know, what type of project it is, um, that may warrant a deed restriction, or you may, just across the board, if there's going to be maintenance beyond the initial period, um, that we do do a deed restriction to put those property owners on the hook. So what has been discussed, I think amongst a lot of the parties, is when do we require those deed restrictions? And the thoughts that I'm hearing are, if it's a multi-jurisdictional project, if it's a threshold amount, then for those type of projects, we make sure that there's a deed restriction. And if it's not going to be a multi-jurisdictional project, then does the underlying jurisdiction hold that deed restriction and they follow their policies regarding that? So those are kind of the options that I think are being discussed. And, you know, the other thing to consider is, you know, a project, uh, we recently had one where someone filled in a well, it collapsed, the property got sold in the interim, and what authority did we have or the project holder have to go in and fix it? So even though it might be a small project, it might be a project that doesn't necessarily require a ton of maintenance, it can also pose an issue and a risk. So that's kind of what's being discussed at, uh, the local level everywhere. I don't know if you guys have any feelings regarding deed restrictions?
Michelle, thank you for the update, Mr. Chair. It was a fairly harsh argument at our last joint powers entity agreement, because there was people in the group that felt that if we were to put deed restrictions on these properties, we wouldn't have properties to do programs with.
Correct.
Now, I happen to feel a little bit the opposite way, where these are, you know, tax dollars that in this situation, the well was a tax dollars that, in this situation, the well was a small one, but if we hypothetically take a shoreline project that costs 50 grand, the thing falls apart and it was sold, what are we gonna do? Those tax dollars are gone, we can't hold the landowner accountable for anything. So I'm more in the camp of deed restricting this. I'm open to looking at dollar amounts, obviously, if it's a $3,000 project, they're probably not gonna force a deed restriction. But we've got to come up with a, a number that makes some sense to protect those tax dollars, because we are at risk of losing those. Michelle, how about SWCD? Where does Benton SWCD sit? Have you had discussions with them?
I have, and they kind of were talking about that. If it's multi-jurisdictional, if it meets a threshold, then a deed restriction. And then for single jurisdictions that maybe aren't, who would follow the policies of the under.
Also talking to JPE level, that any of their underlying projects, this, they would be subjected to it all. Like Benton wouldn't be able to decide on their own, or Sterns or Sherburne, their SWCDs, they would be expected to follow the JPA, JPE's rules. Is that correct?
Um, well, that, that could be an option. The last that I had heard, it was that each jurisdiction would kind of follow their own individual policy for projects that were within their jurisdiction that were maybe under a certain threshold amount.
So maybe the JP would set the threshold and then let the rest of them operate under that?
Yes.
Is that what you're hearing from other county attorneys, too?
I don't know what other county attorneys are hearing. We are actually having a meeting on Thursday, so I can certainly ask.
So are we. The JP is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, so.
So don't the SWCDs have something in place already when they fund some of these projects?
Some counties, some soil and water conservation.
But they don't have a deed restriction that I think of, I don't think.
Um, yeah, I know that certain SWCDs do have policies in place regarding when they require a deed restriction and when they don't. I know that our local SWCD will be looking at a policy regarding deed restrictions. Just, it's become more of an issue, and, you know, homeownership changes, property ownership changes more regularly, it seems. So that will be something that will be considered.
Well, and I think that was the point, that the members of the JP, some of the members felt that that trumped the availability to potentially do projects. I mean, we want projects, the same token, what's the risk to the taxpayer?
Yeah. There's a risk, but I don't know, I think there's be a lot of pushback once you go to the deed restriction.
There, there may be, but remember, these landowners are getting funded through taxpayer dollars to do a project.
And then sell afterwards.
And if they sell.
Yeah.
Where's the taxpayers?
Exactly.
I have a question. So, so a farmer can put property into a CIP or whatever, and if they sell their property, that has to be paid back. Do you know what I'm talking about?
I think it depends on the program. Commissioner Pop might have a better idea, but some of that stuff goes with the property. It is virtually deed restricted.
Okay.
Or it's, it's perpetual. You know, like if I have CRP and I sell it halfway through, he's getting the CRP with it when he buys it.
The payment goes with it.
But these are a little different.
Okay. I'm just wondering if, if it's something that can work along that same line?
These are all one water, one plan dollars.
Okay.
Versus state or federal specifically.
Okay.
Well, and it's kind of the same concept, that CRP gets recorded so that the next property owner has notice. And that's really what we're trying to accomplish with deed restrictions, is, it's, it's really the recording fee for the deed restriction, and it's just putting that next owner on notice.
I, I do believe that when they, when you do a CRP contract, there's a buyout if the property changes hands.
That could be. I'm not familiar.
Could be. I, I think the people who are opposed to deed restrictions don't want the cost of the deed restriction.
Right.
And they don't want to subject the, the project to not happening because of a deed restriction. And I understand that, but I'm just, to me, the risk outweighs the project not happening. That's just my opinion. And it's about the only way you're gonna protect those tax dollars if, if something happens.
Well, and ultimately, we're responsible for those tax dollars.
Well, that JP is in this situation, as far as I'm concerned.
JP, and shouldn't Bowser have some skin in that game, too?
Uh, nope. So they, they give us the money, and they forced us into these one watershed, one plans. I shouldn't say forced, they have strongly encouraged for the funding to enter into these events. So the joint powers entity is who would have skin in the game.
And the Bowser rep who was at that meeting basically said it's the JP's decision.
So we have no agreement like that within the realm?
Um, so I think this would just be kind of setting policy regarding when you set a deed restriction. Then we would work on agreements to make it clear that that would be a part of the project, just recording a deed restriction, kind of like we do with Platts.
And I guess my ask from you is everybody's thoughts on, I mean, we have our meeting on Thursday, they're gonna ask, you know, are you interested in deed restrictions? Are you interested in a, a dollar amount before we get to a deed restriction? Are you interested in no deed restrictions and just push the projects forward? I need to be able to bring that information back to the JP, so.
Have, have they looked at, I, I think, you know, the, the JP needs to look at what some of the larger ones, like the Southwest Route, and all some of them have done, because if they're not considering that, I don't see why we would, you know, why the Mississippi wouldn't consider it.
It's risk management.
Yeah.
And so really, it's, it's how risk adverse you are, or how much you want to protect those funds and protect those improvements.
You need to protect the funds, but you also need to have the funds out, out the door eventually.
Do you have, do you have an idea, how else do we protect the funds?
I don't know. Yeah, I don't, I don't know how you, there's gotta be other ways for the SWCDs and that, too.
Apparently, there's no other ways, because they haven't done it yet. You know, so at that point in time, Commissioner Johnson, I would consider a dollar amount.
Yeah, I would, too.
Okay.
And we have agreements with the property owners that put them on the hook. It's just that event of property owners.
Right.
And they would terminate at the time of the project maintenance period being over. A lot of them just maintain for 10 years, so we would put language in that deed restriction.
Typical deed restriction cost?
Recording fee.
Recording of 52 bucks, or whatever it is.
Yep.
Yeah.
Seems like a good safeguard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Michelle, for your update.
Now we'll go to Sandy Schoburg. Good morning.
I'm gonna turn this agenda over to Nikki right away, so.
I'll, I'll up here. Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I have a request in front of you for the approval of the Ucare contract for targeted case management for mental health. Prior to this, when we had clients in the community who wanted mental health targeted case management around the Ucare insurance, we would refer them to somebody else to do that service. We saw an increase in Ucare clients, especially in commitments. So we had reached out to Ucare and asked if they would contract with us to provide this service. So now it is a gen, a revenue generating contract for us.
Mr. Chair, Nikki, when you say revenue generating, what kind of revenue are you talking about?
So for, it, it depends on the client. So it is a revenue based on clients served. So for adults, we get $902 per month for a, a visit, and then for children, we get $925 per month.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion, approve the Ucare contract mental health targeted case management.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made in second to approve the, the contract. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Carry.
Thank you. This one is a little bit tricky, since it, it's an amendment to the current one with that public health hold, so we'll need signatures from both Commissioner Pop and Commissioner Heinand on that new contract amendment.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Chris Byrd.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
My first item, I didn't know that Brian with the APO would be here, I would've had him stick around for this next item that I have. But it deals with a grant program through the state called corridors of commerce. Let's see if I can bring my agenda items on the screen here. And I will make sure I am sharing it with everybody following at home. All right. So Brian Gibson, the executive director of the APO, has applied for a corridors of commerce project. This uses trunk highway dollars, so the project is kind of limited to trunk highways. And he applied for trunk highway 15 through the St. Cloud region. It's kind of gone through the first phase of it, and now they're seeking letters of support from all the jurisdictions in which trunk highway 15 passes through. So that means Benton County. The idea, if successful, the grant would fund engineering work to study the corridor through the St. Cloud region to identify operational improvements, ways to make traffic flow more efficiently through the region. We've all traveled through the 15-23 intersection in St. Cloud, so I imagine a lot of the attention would be focused on that intersection. But the application that was put forth does include all the way to the location where 15 intersects with Highway 10 in Benton County. So it was mentioned briefly at our TAC Technical Advisory Committee meeting last week, some of the other jurisdictions have already adopted similar res, or letters of support. I think the counties were the kind of the holdouts, it seemed like the cities had already done it, so us counties had not got the letters of support adopted by our boards. So it's kind of a quick and dirty synopsis of the project.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
This, this has been talked about pretty heavily at the APO. As we all know, 15 and 23, that intersection is horrible.
Yeah.
And that whole area is, is not, not very good. And it basically, as, as we know, we gotta do these studies, even though if we know, even though we know we have fixes, you gotta do the studies in order to even apply for any federal funding to, to fix that, that area. So.
Mr. Chair, it is disappointing, ever since when they built 15, you know, there's been study after study, but I agree with Commissioner Kapinski. Unfortunately, we have to do the studies, federal funding at all.
When your packet was included a draft suggestion of letter support, if the board is supportive of that, you just authorized the board chair to sign that, or have their own letter of support drafted. This was sample language that was provided by the APO.
Yeah.
I'll move approval of the board to sign the letter of support.
And I'll second that.
It's been moved in second to support a letter of support. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Carry.
Very good. The next item I brought before you is maybe a formal adoption of parking lot repairs at the highway building. We discussed it at the last board meeting. It was suggested, could we change order to an existing overlay project? And I believe that's something that could be done. So just hard numbers now from our contractor, that to do our parking lot would be $284,360, even dollars. So that does include a lot of work by our forces. We would remove the existing bitumen and haul that stockpile it. We would have the fence removed and reset. We would do a lot of the grading, too, try to get the parking lot to drain better away from the building, away from pedestrian entrances and where visitors park. And then the contractor, Knife River, would do the final shaping and then the paving of it for that $284,359. So, so I guess kind of two actions that I'm requesting, if that is acceptable, acceptable to the board, you know, approve, change ordering that onto an existing county project. And then the second approval is just a, a discussion and approval of the funding source for that $284,000, so.
Mr. Chair, timeline, Chris?
Uh, the contractor has been very accommodating, as soon as we're ready for them. So if it was approved today, we would schedule our maintenance forces to start doing that work in the next couple weeks, and then the contractor.
Which project are we tying it with?
It would be the mill and overlay projects on 66 and 43, so.
Okay.
So they're local funded projects coming out of our local road CIP.
Do you recall our original estimate on doing those estimates, we're pushing a half million?
That's right, yeah. Mm-hmm. So to kind of maximize savings, too, I think we're, we're willing to do more of the work this time than, than previous, so.
And because of the numbers we've seen and quantity in the business.
Yeah, I think Knife River was very hungry for work, gave us very good prices on our overlay projects, and that's kind of reflected in, in, in these prices as well.
Mr. Chair. Yes.
We, we asked, we asked you guys to come with ideas, and I think your staff, Mark Ebner, and you guys all came forward, and I thought, I think that's a, it's a great option to get something done. If we don't do it, we're gonna be stuck replacing it altogether down the road.
And it'll be a stand, it could be a standalone project.
Yep.
You know, this is a whole lot better than $500,000.
You're correct, at a much higher price, too. You know, with that, I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to change, for the change order for the current construction contract.
I'll second that. Motion's been made in second to approve the change order for the contract.
Mr. Chair, motion makers, you consider adding in where, how we'd like to pay with it?
That'd be the second motion.
All right, you want a second, Lee? All right, thank you.
So motion's been made and seconded to approve the change order. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Carry. Okay, and now we need another motion.
Of how we're gonna pay for it. So we did.
CIP.
Talk about, you know, splitting it, right? Commissioner Johnson, I believe, you were part of that.
Splitting it.
The 285, splitting it between CIP and maintenance.
Coming out of the savings from the.
I thought we talked about it at the last board meeting, or Cal doing it completely under CIP.
Monte, do you remember?
I'm sorry, I don't.
Oh, man. None of us remember, apparently.
Uh, Chris, can you refresh my memory on the maintenance discussion? We did talk about a maintenance budget.
Yeah, we did have considerable savings on our maintenance hatching, uh, project. But, but I do recall there were some discussions, there was some money saved, or set aside as part of the whole building CIP project, that the parking lots were to be addressed. And I recall the discussion with the parking lot at the highway to building was in such disrepute, we had to do something soon, more sooner than later. Yeah, we, last winter, when we did plow, we were plowing up chunks of the parking lot, so that's why we're kind of getting urgent about replacing it, so.
And as I, as, what I recall is, we talked about using the maintenance budget.
Right.
Original, originally, but with that, we knew that if we have a bad winter, we're gonna be replenishing that maintenance budget, or that maintenance goes, takes a hit. And I, I, I think that's where we came up with the CIP funding.
Well, and I would, I think the original CIP funding request was gonna be half a million dollars, so we're at 285.
Yep.
I, I'm fine, we're, however.
I'll move to fund it through the CIP funds for the $285,000 requested.
Second. Motion's been made in second to fund it through the CIP. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Carry.
Very good, thank you, Commissioner. We'll get to work on that right away. All right. The next regularly scheduled item was something that was, of all the things that did not get done with the state legislative session, this completely caught me off guard. My ag inspector informed me of this. Something that did get passed was a, and signed into, to law was an ag bill. And in that state ag bill, identified some grants to counties that have ag inspectors, or what they call a designated employee. It looks like in the, the current biennium, or the next biennium, they've set aside $500,000 a year for county ag inspectors. And if it was divided amongst all 87 counties equally, it would be $5,700 per county. There's still a lot of details to work out as far as what the grant application looks like, but here's some of the things that was in the bill language that gets signed for ag inspectors to get this $5,700 or a portion of the grant. Must annually submit an application. Must annually submit an application. Okay, that's to be expected, but we don't know what that application looks like. Another thing is has attended training for new county ag inspectors offered by the commissioner, and that would be the commissioner of agricultural. Coordinates with the commissioner to review applicable laws and enforcement procedures. Three, complies and submits to the commissioner local weed inspector annual report data. Four, conducts an annual meeting and training for local weed inspectors. And five, assists the commissioner with control programs and other agricultural programs when requested under Minnesota Statute, Section eighteen dot eighty-one subdivision one B, as directed by the county board. So some of these things, we already do on an annual basis because of under current statute about the noxious weed law. We're obligated to do those tasks already. It's just interesting that it, you know, an opportunity arises for additional grant for maybe something that we're already doing. And I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention. Nothing for action today, but, you know, with all the talk recently with the state budget and grants and getting hooked into things that all of a sudden grants aren't available for, I just wanted to make you aware that we may pursue this. We'll wait to see what more guidance comes out later. But if it's something that we're already doing, it may be worth us pursuing, you know, five thousand dollars a year just to offset some of those costs that were already. Just something I found interesting.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
You clarified it because of all the things that is required and that is definitely going to add up to more than fifty-seven hundred dollars worth of refunds. So we're already doing it, then it's a different story.
Yeah, and there's an association of ag inspectors that have been lobbying this for years evidently, and they finally got something this year. So of all the things that did not get funded, I found that to be an interesting one that didn't even know that people were pursuing that's now available to us, so.
So do we have, who do we have designated that is our, like, weed inspector?
Yeah, Jack Brosh. He, so he's weed inspector, sign installer, and operator engineer. So he does a lot of things for the county.
Do you know, do the township still have to report?
I believe so, yeah. And then if any weed applicator, he proctors exams quite often at our department, where outsiders come into our office and take the state-required test to get licensed for pesticide application, seed inspectors. So he just makes sure that they're not cheating on the tests while they're in our office and things like that. So, yeah, I mean, something that he does, that's just part of the, you know, the levy-budgeted expense for his position. Yeah, all right, information. All right, now if we could do the added item, my request. This just came in very last minute and after I submitted agenda items. It was the final pay request for project SAP zero-zero-five-five-ninety-nine-oh-two-nine. This is the bridge replacement of the Maywood Town Bridge. Was complete, the construction was completed last year. We finally received all the final paperwork from the contractor and should release the retainage. So just to refresh everybody's memory, this is what it looked like before construction. This was the timber bridge that was actually closed for about four years due to the condition of it. This is what it looked like shortly after construction. And then this is what it looks like more recently with vegetation established on the slopes and stuff. So it's a concrete box culvert replacement. Honestly, the design life of this should be, if nobody's concerned, that's around today. So little to no maintenance over the next seventy-five to a hundred years, hopefully. So landwork construction was the contractor on it. Like I said, has completed all the contractual obligations. They are owed the final payment and the release of retainage. So just asking for the board to approve acceptance of the contract and authorize board chair signature on the final payment. Oh, I should note, though, the funds for this are being paid for out of the town bridge account. Something that's set aside for all the counties to replace bridges on township roads in their county. Comes out of the Highway User Tax Distribution Fund. And so that's what, why this is critical to get this done now is like, we don't get our final payment until we've paid the contractor. So it's not like we're sitting on the revenue yet. We don't get our revenue until we provide documentation that we've paid the contractor in full, submit that to the state. So we'll also request engineering costs to be reimbursed for the engineering costs on that, too. So that's another expense that we've expensed out that we haven't received revenue on.
Mr. Chair, I think in referring to that, Maywood Township set aside ten thousand for engineering and ten thousand for construction.
That's correct. Their contribution was twenty thousand dollars total for a project.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but I wanted to thank you because I think you took this to the state for the second time. This was denied the first time around.
That's right.
You and I attended a Maywood Township meeting and process got going again, and you reapplied for them.
That's right, it did. Just through attrition, we had to wait for state attrition, and then we replied again, and was able to get funding for it. So, yeah, in all, it was a three-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand dollar bridge replacement that the township had to come up with twenty thousand dollars. So a pretty good deal for townships.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I'm going to move approval for final payment to landwear construction and authorize signatures on the pay vote.
I'll second that.
Most men made and seconded to authorize the final payment on the Maywood Township Bridge and authorize the chair to sign. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Posed, carried. Thanks for that.
All right, thank you. And then lastly, I just wanted to provide an update on construction projects that are happening. We're hot and heavy into construction now. The first project I'll talk about is our big one, our Casaw seven reconstruction project from highway ninety-five up to county state aid highway four. This is the one we started last year, started grading the first mile, mile and a quarter from ninety-five north. That was graded last year. Those, actually two miles, those two miles are now paved. They have the base course of two inches down for those first two miles. But the road is still closed. Hopefully, public doesn't get too excited and see paved roadway and try to go past the barricades because we do still have a lot of contractor personnel and inspection staff out there in the, on the road. So it's still a closed road and active construction site. So north of those two miles, our grading subcontractor, Bersky, is still grading between thirty-fifth and forty-fifth street, trying to bring that up to grade. Once they do that, Hellman Construction will start bringing in sand in class five and continue working north. The contract deadline is still August first. It's not a working day contract, it's a completion date. So if they have rain delays, they need to try to make up that by bringing in extra equipment, more personnel, but to still meet that. So all paving and everything needs to be done by August first. If not, we have liquidated damages of three thousand dollars per day that we will charge per calendar day that the project is not done. So August first is a Friday. If they needed Monday to get finished up, unless there are some extenuating circumstances, Saturday and Sunday, we could charge liquidated damages of three thousand dollars per day on that project, so.
Mr. Chair, Chris, were you just putting the base on then this year?
No, right now, as it's written, it's everything. So everything, so that's striping and permanent seeding done by August first. So. The next project I'll talk about is County Road sixty-six. The reclaimed portion from Pine Road north to County Road twenty-two, where we reclaimed it. If you recall several years ago, that were on the road tour where we had the stumps. So we did a reclaim action to grind up the existing pavement. And we did, we found about ten more stumps in that area that we, that we had the contractor dig out. This time, though, we put a geotextile fabric down. Hopefully, if there's still any stumps that are buried in that muck trying to come through, that they'll hit that netting and keep them from pumping into the pavement. So, yeah, we reclaimed that and put four inches of, or will be putting four inches of new batuminous on it. Two inches is done. The base lift is done for that two-mile section. They started yesterday paving the top work course and then got halted by their plant breaking down and then the rain. So as soon as the rain stops and the roadway surface dries up a little bit, they'll be back on paving that surface on that project. After that, the contractor is going to be moving to Casaw twenty-five to do that overlay portion on twenty-five between ninety-five and highway twenty-three, that sand mix overlay, so.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Chris, please explain to me how the fabric's going to stop the stumps?
Well, it's a geo grid. So it has a higher tinsel strength than the traditional woven geotextiles. So we're hoping that now with our reclaim action, we've caught everything that's in the first eight to twelve inches of that pavement structure. So will it prevent everything? Maybe not. But if there is still stumps under there, we're hoping that we've delayed those stumps from punching through the pavement by providing some resistance in the pavement structure for at least, you know, hopefully twenty years down the road for the life of the pavement. So the only way to really ensure that would be to do a full grading project, and that means a subcut of two feet at least. That area, though, is really poor soils. Soil borings indicate that muck is deeper than two feet. So that would be an expensive project to kind of chase that and probably just isn't justified for the traffic volumes in that area. So we've beefed up the pavement structure by the reclaim and the thicker pavement. That geotextile does factor in and add a little bit more strength. And then we're kind of hoping that that acts as a barrier, at least, at least to slow down the migration of stumps in there. So Mother Nature does find a way, not to quote Jurassic Park or anything, but sometimes it does find a way to beat up our pavements, but.
Mr. Chair, do you remember, recall what the ADTs are on sixty-six there in that section at all?
I do not. That's something I could easily find by just looking at the plan sheet, so.
Thank you.
South of that section, though, is a mill and overlay of County Road sixty-six, all the way down to highway twenty-three. So that's what they're supposed, they were supposed to start milling on, is that today? No, on forty-three today, but due to the rain, we haven't got an update yet on that. That may not start until tomorrow. So the overlay on forty-three from north of town here, going west past Golden Spike Road, and then a mill and an overlay sixty-six from twenty-three up to Pine Road. They should be milling, though, sometime this week, so. I'm trying to reassure the public and calls that we've got that traffic will still be carried through construction. So you'll see roadwork signs, roadwork ahead signs pop up, but the contract will keep traffic moving through with the use of flaggers and stuff. So the road will not be completely closed down. Hopefully, we're not diverting traffic on to other roads adjacent to our county road. So during that time that their operations are happening, you will face short delays as you're waiting for that traffic in the other direction to clear out, and the flagger can release you to go past the paving operation, so. Another thing to note, though, that's of significance, that mill and overlay project on forty-three does have a bridge repair component on the bridge over Elk River. And so actually, this Thursday, the contractor is planning on closing that. It has a batuminous overlay on it. But once we peel off that batuminous overlay, there's joints in the concrete beams that we need to reseal up. And so to do that, it requires the bridge to be completely closed, an application of a cementitious grout, and then a waterproofing membrane on top of that. And because of that, it does require traffic to be kept off of that bridge for a couple of days. The plan is to close that on Thursday, be closed through the weekend, then next Monday, overlay it and open it back up. So we'll be issuing a press release today on that to notify that and put that on social media, so. And then after all that's done, our overlay on Casaw nine will happen, so. Other projects in the highway department. This Friday, we opened bids on our bridge replacement projects of the County Road fifty-one bridge east of town here and the Casaw twenty-two bridge up by the old former Rum Shack, if anybody remembers that place. So those are actual bridge replacement projects where we'll be driving piling, setting new bridge beams and concrete decks on those. So those are still scheduled to be completed this year, late this, early fall, late summer. So we'll open bids on that. Those are the ones that are funded with federal dollars, and then we receive state bridge replacements to come up with the remainder of that, so. Gilman Project, still moving forward. We're hoping to have those plans advertised next week on those. So they're getting their final approvals right now from state aid. And we're hoping to get those back this week, and then we'll advertise those starting Monday next week and start that project, so. And then the final project we're working on, Casaw twenty-nine roundabout. We've got all of our work done. We're just waiting on the final signatures from federal highways since it does have that federal aid component on that. And then hopefully, we'll get those advertised still yet this month and do that bypass road probably late summer of this year. And then most of that roundabout construction will happen next calendar year, so. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, any update from Excel on the Casaw twenty-nine area?
Ah, yeah, I still, I attended their most recent meeting, which I guess has been two weeks ago this week. Still, nothing's changed as an in-surface date of September twenty-ninth of twenty-twenty-five, so.
My other question is on Casaw nine, the overlay, is it going to be from Casaw four and how far north?
To north of twenty-three.
Okay.
A little bit, yeah.
Just a little bit or to the.
Yeah, over that patch where we had that pipe replaced.
Okay.
So, yeah, we'll get that covered up. So we, the contractor was hoping to get to that sooner, but they're coming out of their plant that's right there off of nine. And we encouraged him to wait to overlay that after they're done pounding it with their trucks hauling all the batuminous, so maximize that left. And they were accommodating of that, so.
Thank you.
You mentioned Excel Energy, thank you for doing that. That reminds me, I do want to report that we did finally get our grant from DED. If you recall, Excel Energy had us put down a substantial down payment, so to speak. We had to pay in January about six-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars, which was reimbursable by that energy transition grant. Late last week, we found out that we did receive that revenue. So we were appreciative of that. I was starting to get a little bit nervous if the state shut down and that agency shut down, would they be processing grant payments or not? So, but we got that in, so highway department's good to go. We can keep operating even if the state shuts down. Quickly, I know I've been up here a long time. I'll just mention some of the maintenance activities that are happening. We're currently graveling County Road fifty-two, taking from our stockpile in our Asian Shake pit and putting new gravel on that. Weed spraying are happening. We've been spraying ditches for noxious weeds, and now we're focusing guardrails and signs where weed and brush starts to go up around guardrails. We're spraying those to keep those down. That's important for the operation of that guardrail. If somebody hits that, that guardrail needs to flex and bend to slow down cars and shouldn't be clogged up with brush. Replacing a culvert at Casaw fourteen and Finch Road this week. We're still waiting on our maintenance striping, though, so not sure when that'll happen. We do know we have a lot of brushing to get. The wind this year has been just something else. We've got a lot of trees that have gone down this winter and this spring with winds, and we know there's more trees that are leaning already that we may have to tackle before they actually fall onto the road. So that's been keeping our crews pretty busy this winter and spring is brushing, so. And finally, I'm happy to report that we should be getting two new plow trucks before the end of this month. Recall, these are the ones that we ordered almost three years ago. They will be replacing plow trucks that were originally purchased in two thousand and two. So twenty-three-year-old plow trucks will finally be able to retire hopefully this month when those new ones come in, so. Quick update on the happenings around the highway department. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions, or I can gladly sit down as well.
You call that a quick update?
It could go longer.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Busy time of the year for the highway.
Then we'll get on to commissioner meeting updates.
No, we won't.
What do we got?
Turn it over to me.
Community Health Board, that's right.
I'll call the order of the Community Health Board. Note that Commissioner Kapinski had to leave prior appointments. Other than that, everybody else is here. Approver amend the agenda. I see we have one item to add.
Yeah, actually, I have two items, yeah. SCSU contract that came in late last week, I think it was Friday. And then I did receive an email from one of our coalition members, and I just wanted to share that recognition with the Community Health Board and read that email at the end as well.
Move for approval of the amended agenda, Mr. Chair.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Consent agenda, item one, what would you like to do with? Consent agenda, item one, what would you like to do with that?
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you. Jaclyn, consider the request to apply for two AmeriCorps.
Yes, so, um, as you may have heard, the Public Health AmeriCorps program is ending at the end of the current term. Currently have two AmeriCorps members. Uh, AmeriCorps AMPACT is bran- has another branch called Recovery Corps, and they'd like to extend that to our public health project coordinators if we're interested in being a partner site. Uh, we had our AmeriCorps members here do a presentation of all the capacity that they've brought to our department. It would be very similar setup. AmeriCorps pays their salary stipends, pays for their benefits. They get, um, a couple additional things underneath their employment under AmeriCorps, but they get partnered with our public health agency. So I'm just here to request that we transition from AmeriCorps Public Health Corps to AmeriCorps Recovery Corps and gain approval that we could continue on with that program and solicit members through that. Um, really, for equipment, you know, we, we pretty much have the equipment already on hand, but for updates and things like that, we may need to purchase that in the future. So I did put that down as a cost. Um, there is a site fee per member of $3,000 per year. Again, we get those members 40 hours per week, um, or part-time member 20 hours per week, depending on which we have capacity for, for supervision wise. Um, so I put down that cost there as well. We do have a workforce infrastructure grant that can fund and pay for that site fee. So, just looking for board approval for us to request up to two Recovery Corps members who would serve as public health or project coordinators, um, and continue on with very similar projects. Their focuses would likely be, um, focused again on the protecting and promoting health, but also in the recovery, so treatment, recovery, substance use prevention, that's that realm, which is certainly needed as well.
Questions?
Mr. Chair, Jaclyn, uh, you have a note on here, 40 hours per week for 11 months.
Yeah, AmeriCorps does their terms as 11-month terms for some reason. I don't know why they have a gap month in there, but when their members serve with them, they serve for 11 months, and then they have a month off, and then if they return the next year, then they start back up again.
Then you'd be applying for two recovery memories, members each year or until the program ends?
Yeah, up, yeah, up to two. You know, sometimes depending on capacity, you know, my, my capacity for supervision, I might only ask for one. Um, depending on how many you want to return. I know we have one member who may be, maybe interested in returning and other members graduating. Um, so, you know, just, it's sometimes that shifts. But yeah, I was thinking maybe up to two. I wouldn't want maybe any more than that, so.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the two AmeriCorps.
We have a, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on this? If not, I'm going to call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you. Jaclyn, Town Square Media contract.
Yeah, and thank you for the support of the AmeriCorps. They've done a fabulous job for us. Um, so regarding the Town Square Media contract, so our Child and Teen Checkups Program has designated funds that we are looking to put towards a media campaign. Um, this will be a campaign in partnership with the other Child and Teen Checkup programs from across the central region. Um, this would be a partnership with Town Square Media. The contract is, is attached, and I've invited Kayla, who leads our Child and Teen Checkup Program here. She's our coordinator, um, one of our community health specialists. I'll just invite her up to share a little bit about what that campaign, um, details would look like.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning, commissioners. Um, I want to just start by saying I am not the expert on this. Um, that's why we are using Town Square Media. Um, they, uh, came to us asking if we'd want to work with them on advertising, um, which towards the end of our year last year, we kind of were planning on, but, um, they kind of wanted to do it as like a regional thing. So we are going to do sort of like a, I don't know, a regional campaign with a couple different counties. So Malax, um, Sherburne, Isany, Meeker, McLeod, and Sibley Counties are all part of this project. Um, we kind of want to just do a campaign over the summer just to kind of get messaging out there about different health topics. Um, so we were doing, uh, mental health, uh, dental health. Um, we're going to do like back-to-school checkups. Were kind of our plans. Um, and, um, we're kind of working collaboratively on this effort, although each county is doing their own thing separately. So each county gets billed separately. It's just sort of a way to reach more people, since we know a lot of people move across county lines, right? Um, it sounds so far, um, that the campaign has gone really well. Um, they did start, the other county started in May, and they were able to reach, um, I think with like the website banner ads that they did, they reached about 49,000 people. Um, and then they're also doing video ads as well, which during the first month reached about 30,000 people. Um, so, so far, it seems like it's pretty effective. It's a great way to, um, target the population that we're looking to reach. Um, and then we just kind of hope that we can join in for the June, July, and August sessions.
So, I see that the total campaign budget is $1,986. Is that what our bill will be?
Yeah, so, um, last year when I worked on the CNTC budget, um, we put in that amount for advertising, which we planned on using anyways, but then Town Square came to us and had this idea, and it worked out really well with what they can give us, so.
So it's in your budget then?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, uh, what's an impression?
Um, so it's like the number of people that they reach.
Okay.
And then I think they said as well, um, I'd have to double check on this. They said the click-through rate, so the number of people that actually clicked onto the ads were about 0.32%, which doesn't sound like a lot, but they said typically average is around 0.05 to 0.1%. So, so far, it sounds like it's been pretty effective, um, and hopefully throughout the summer, it continues on that way.
And I believe this is the first time you've used Town Square Media then?
As far as I am aware, um, I know that we've done billboards in the past, but we're just going to try something a little bit different this time.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Board questions? Motion?
I'll make a motion for Town Square Media contract.
I'll second that. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? Now I'm going to call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you. Next, Central Minnesota Area Transportation.
Yeah, and just one quick note on the Town Square Media. If we're able to get signatures today by chance, that would be great, because we're coming into the campaign. I know they're really eager to get that started with, including the Benton Geography, so. All right, so moving on to the Central Minnesota Area Transportation Partnership Grant Application. Um, the Transportation Alternatives Program application for constructing a shared-use trail along Benton County Road 55 from Trailhead Park to Bend in the River. Park was selected for funding by the Central Minnesota Area Transportation Partnership. I have Emma here, who was part of, um, working on that grant application, and I know Chris is still here as well. Um, so Emma will just give a little bit of update, and I'll pass out a copy here of the PowerPoint as she gets started here. Let me just get it shared on the screen. And I do want to say a quick happy birthday to Emma. It's her birthday today, and yet she's here with us. So thankful to have her spending her birthday morning with us here. Oops, let's get this shared. There we go.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, we applied for the TAP grant, also known as the Transportation Alternative Program, and this is our third time applying. This year, we were selected by the Central Minnesota Area Transportation Partnership. Um, so this is federal transportation alternative funding to construct the Bend-in-the-River link, which is like just under a mile of separated trail connecting the City of Rice to Bend-in-the-River Regional Park. And so this would run alongside of County Road 55 and just provide a safer, separated path for families, youth, seniors, to get to the park a little bit safer, um, and just promote people to be active and getting out to the park. Because there's been a lot of updates to the park recently, so we want people to be using it. Um, so the, we were awarded $258,060 for the funding year 2029 with a 20% local match, and then the City of Rice is agreeing to maintain the trail. And then, talking with Chris, his department doesn't have capacity to take on this whole project, so this would also have some engineering consulting costs too. And this is just a quick map of it. You can see on the top, that's where the City of Rice has like a piece of land set aside called Trailhead Park. So you'd cross over, and then it would run along east side of County Road 55, and it would tie right into an existing trail in the park, so people can walk, bike, but yeah. And then this is just the estimated cost of it. Yeah, this would be for 2029.
I do have a question. Chris, didn't we apply, didn't we try to apply for grants in the previous years for this trail?
Yeah, it's, it's an M and O, I think this was the third round.
Yeah.
Uh, for this, so, um, this is, I, I, it's my experience on being on the 7W TAC. It's a very competitive program, uh, for these. There's a lot of, way more applications than there is ever funding available for, so.
And Public Health got the funding for it, to help us out in a sense, right? Hmm, incredible, right? So the question I have is, we've got a 20% match, and you said that the, uh, the City of Rice is just going to do the maintenance?
Yeah.
So if it's a 20% match, it's 51,612.
Yeah, that's the number I got, too.
Yeah, and that's on us then, the county, correct?
Well, that's correct, yeah, so.
And we're just going to let Rice maintain the trail? I know we had numerous conversations about this in the past.
Miss.
Plus, I, I just want to make sure also, there's engineering costs.
I was just going to say there's ineligible.
That's additional to the construction.
Yep, I got that.
So there's a, a match just for the construction costs. Engineering costs are not eligible under that grant program.
So in this case, it's 86 grand worth of.
Right.
Right.
Well, I do know that Rice did get all the right-of-way, though, for it, correct, Chris?
Yeah, when we redid that road.
Yes.
Several few years ago, that was on the City of Rice to.
Buy the right-of-way with it.
So they purchased the right-of-way and will do the future maintenance?
And the future maintenance for it, yeah. I, it just seems pretty, seems pretty ironic to me that we've applied three times, but Public Health got it, and, you know, highway department or anybody else never received this grant.
I think it was Public Health applied all three times.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, the funds, since we, since the highway department, our Department of Transportation program, uh, this is what they call managed funds, so they will get funneled to the highway departments that we will, and it's a reimbursement process. So, the county will have to incur the cost first, and then we would have to submit the reimbursement applications to get reimbursed for the federal grant at the time of construction.
Mr. Chair, go ahead. So, I under- wonders, I understand that when we applied for this, we had an agreement with the city already, right?
To my knowledge, there's no formal agreements.
Because I'm kind of, you know, a lot of this is within the city limits, and I'm kind of wondering why the city doesn't help with the 20% match.
I was at a present at a city council meeting, and they're responsible as well. It's a county road.
And it's a Rice pu- public right-of-way that they purchased.
They purchased the right-of-way, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I, I, maybe I missed it, but where's the 86 grand coming with a 20% local match and then ineligible funding? Where's that 86 grand coming from?
Monty, do.
He'll have to come from out of CIP fund balance.
I, I know we had numerous conversations about this in the past.
That is, that is true. You're right, uh, this is the third attempt. And each, each time, we had to adopt a resolution committing the local match. And the discussion at the time was, it would come out of our CIP fund balance. And, um, if I recall correctly, in a conversation with the city, they point out that they acquired the right-of-way, and they did not expect to participate in the, the local cash match. And I think this time around, they did take it a step farther, and they actually adopted a resolution agreeing to maintenance. Uh, before that, I'm not sure we ever actually had a formal resolution, but this time we did.
So there is a formal.
And I think actually, uh, if I recall correctly, MINDOT wanted that. They wanted to see some formal commitment to, to maintenance long-term. So, uh, um, again, so, uh, you know, we, we have the resources in our CIP fund balance. It's important to point out that, that this is not for until 29, 2029 construction, so it's a ways off.
Mr. Chair, Monty, again, back to the resolution. That's Rice's resolution with themselves. Don't they have one with us?
They, they, they passed a resolution of their council, and that was included in our application packet to MINDOT, where they committed to the, uh, maintenance. I would presume, though, at some point, there should be a formal, uh, agreement between the county and the city regarding maintenance. But again, we do have the resolution and where they've, they made that commitment.
Are we on a timeline on this?
No, I think what's going to happen next is, at some point, MINDOT's going to send us an agreement. Uh, so I think what Emma's doing, just simply announcing this to you today, and at some point, MINDOT will get an agreement to us that will bring to you, uh, to solidify the grant, the grant.
I guess I'd like to see the resolution with, between Rice and the county, too.
Which one?
The resolution between Rice and the county for the maintenance. I realize that they have one in the MINDOT package, but I don't believe they have one with us.
Well, I don't know necessarily if it was a resolution to us per se. It was simply, it was like resolutions that we make. A resolution is simply a motion which says they agree that they'll, they'll, they'll provide the maintenance in the future.
But we've had some history of misunderstanding about that in the past.
Well, this is, I, uh, okay. I mean, I'm just, I, I, you know, Emma, if you could, if you could share that resolution from the city with board members, that'd be great, so.
Yeah.
Well, I think there needs to be some type of a formal agreement between the county and Rice on, in writing stating that they are going to, they're, I mean, I don't know, that their resolution necessarily makes them 100% responsible.
Well, and again, to my point, we've had some history of miscommunication on this, and so it would be nice to clarify it.
I understand, a resolution isn't, isn't legally binding.
Binding, right.
In most cases, it, a contract is.
You know, and when they did buy the right-of-way, they had to buy a fair amount more right-of-way in order to have this set aside.
Yeah, so they did, they did have an investment.
Right, sure.
I brought that up just because of Commissioner Johnson, we've had some issues in the past, so. You know, thank you for working on this, though. Uh, I'm glad we finally received it.
Chip mentioned just a little bit of history, is that, you know, several years ago, the City of Rice did a park plan. And, uh, this was like, I think, is either number one or number two project in the city's park plan to give their residents safer access to Bend-in-the-River Park, you know? And I think with all the improvements there, this has become even more important. There's a lot there, there's a lot more there for folks to enjoy than it was four or five years ago.
Well, Chris, this probably came about before when 55 was a narrow road, and now we've got paved shoulders on it.
And it still is.
Yeah, we've been hearing for years that there are some that would like a trail, uh, along 55, along the whole length of it.
Yeah.
I've also heard from people that say, not in my backyard. So, when you look at the location of where the right-of-way is, you, you'll notice it's opposite of where all the residential dwellings are.
On the east side.
It's like, yeah, we don't want the trail, even though it's in public right-of-way, there's a perception that it's in their backyard, so, um, it's one of those things. You got six of one, half a dozen of the other, on both sides of the.
But I, I agree with Commissioner Benoit that we get a formal agreement. You know, we got some years here, so.
But, uh, due to the nature of the federal funding, it is subject to the federal plan approval process. So it's things like, at least two construction seasons before it needs to be going through its environmental clearance. Uh, this will be, this project, much to our chagrin, will be subject to archaeological and architectural review, uh, just like any other federally funded project. Uh, a- a- and that's where, as I've brought forth, other road projects, that's additional cost sometimes, unless they can do a desktop review and say that, uh, it's not needed on these projects. But those are things that, that get initiated at least two construction seasons before the planned construction.
Again, Mr. Chair, I think there's support from the board for the project. It's just get the.
Correct.
Details cleaned up and get it back to us.
Yep.
And this wasn't an action item anyway. This is just informational, you know? And once again, thank you for working on this. Thank you for coming in on your birthday. And having a long discussion on this action item, or I mean, on this item. Thank you for everything you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll add, um, Emma actually came to us. She was an AmeriCorps member at Sherburne County previously, and then came to us and is one of our community health specialists. So, happy to have her here with us as well.
Great. Next.
All right, so, yeah, moving along. So, yeah, at this time, we, we have, um, our new public health nurse here with us. So I'd like to introduce Kayden Curtis. Kayden has a Bachelor of Science in Nursing, along with his Public Health Nurse Certificate. So Kayden, if you want to come on up. Um, Kayden will be working in our Family Home Visiting Program. He'll be working with our Child and Teen Checkups Program and also with our WIC program. Um, he'll also be backup for infectious disease control nurse, Marnie. Um, Kayden started on May 12th, so he's been here just for a couple of weeks. So I'll just invite Kayden to say a few words about himself, and then I'll take back over.
Hi, commissioners, thank you so much for having me. Um, my name is Kayden. Um, I'm really excited to jump into this public health nurse role, um, especially within the family health and WIC department. Um, I'm really excited to see what, uh, exciting things we can have going forward. Um, I grew up in the Stock Rapids area. Um I grew up in the Stock Rapids area, I'm really excited to be able to serve the county that I kinda grew up in and uh really excited for this position.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Kayden has an interest um in working with some of our fathers' health and parenting support for fathers as well, so we're excited to expand that capacity and see where we can take things and explore that as well.
Great.
All right.
S C S U contract.
Yes, so um basically today I have a contract that I received from S C S U late last week. This contract was prompted, um partly, we, we did have a contract on file when we were part of Human Services, but now that we're our own department, we is um are seeking to receive our own contracts that we can manage that. Um also with the duties, uh this was pro- prompted because we're working with Benton County Economic Partnership. They reached out asking if we had anybody who would do some education out in rural Benton County regarding um some of the A E Ds that they have gotten to place. They've been working on um A E Ds for um different rural parts of Benton County, and they wanted to have, to go along with those A E Ds, some education for the community members that live in those different areas about what an A E D is, and then what to do with it and how to use it. Um you know, the A E Ds don't do any service if nobody knows what they are or that they're for public use. So we actually have a student who is a community health student from Saint Cloud State University, who's interested in taking that project on and would do a rotation with us this summer. So with that, we would need a contract um in order to start that internship. Um so contract is before you in your packet, I'd just be looking for board approval, and then this would allow us to sub- subsequently take students in future years as well, we'd keep this on file, so.
Good deal.
Yeah, summer interns are always a good deal.
Yeah.
Move for approval, Mister Chair?
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion on that item? Now I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries, thank you, Jaclyn. Next email?
Yeah, so I just wanted to share just an email that I received, it's always nice um when we receive some positive feedback, I just wanted to share with the board. Um the Minnesota T Z D, or the Towards Zero Death, is the state traffic safety program that employs an interdisciplinary approach to reducing traffic crashes, injuries and deaths on Minnesota roads. There's T Z D coalitions across the state. Um recently, I received an email from the Stearns Benton T Z D Coalition from the, their business manager, Vicky, and just wanted to share that with you today. Um I'll just read the email and then I can kinda share a little bit of context for background. So she just says, good morning Jaclyn, my name is Vicky Johnson, I'm the business manager for the Stearns Benton Towards Zero Death Safe Roads Coalition. Just wanted to take this opportunity to extend my thanks and gratitude to you for allowing many of your Benton County public health staff to participate in both the Coalition's yearly prom challenge as well as the B B E and Pine Meadow Primary School Safety Town events this spring. Without the help of Tabitha, Emma, Courtney, Mariah, Kayla and Julie, we would not have been able to do nearly as many of these activities, nor have them be as successful as they were. Benton County Public Health has been a tremendous ally and support for the Coalition, and I just cannot thank you enough for sharing your amazing group of ladies with the Coalition. Um so just a couple little tidbits, so the prom challenge is in its fourth year. Basically, what it does is it puts local school districts in competition with each other to encourage seatbelt usage and hands-free driving among its student population. So for the Stearns Benton T Z D Prom Challenge, schools begin the week of prom with a student rally or tally of seatbelt compliance among drivers and passengers who are entering the school parking lots. They tally that information, they also collect information on cellphone um usage while they're driving. Um that information gets reported back, and then during the weeks leading up to prom, the schools are encouraged to um ramp up their safety education within the school day and then, and within that week. And then following prom, they do a, another data compliance check, and then those get ranked. So both Foley and Stock Rapids School District participated in that, both of the high schools did. Um and then they also have Safety Town. Safety Town's an educational program for the younger school age children group. Um it intervenes at earlier grade levels, essentially what they do is set up like a miniature town, and it teaches um the young students to understand safety rules when it comes to pedestrian and vehicle safety. There's different activities along with that as well. Um so you might be thinking, why is public health participating in road safety? Well, we know public health, um you know, anything that impacts the health of our community is an area that we intervene in. And with um road safety, we know that it's a major cause of death and injury, and that is, many of those factors can be prevented. So from a public health lens, we know that if people are safer, they're healthier, if our communities are healthier, we have thriving communities. Um so alongside those community partners and other county departments, you know, we're approaching this from many different angles, you know, working on car seats, um supporting safe driving laws, um raising awareness about seatbelts, drunk driving, um all those different partnerships and community coalitions that we're working on. And I'll just share just a quick couple of photos that were shared with us, um just so you have an idea of what this looks like. Um so this is the prom challenge, so they have um seatbelt. Um basically, it's different devices that the, the students can sit in and learn why wearing seatbelt is so important. So here's just some pictures of some of those um devices. There's Courtney there, um and Julie, one of our community health super, or um community health specialists there, and the seatbelt convincer. And then this is Safety Town, so this is for the younger school age children. So again, you can see there's Mariah and Kayla, but it has the younger students set up um in the gymnasium, and they do education on traffic safety, pedestrian safety, how to cross roads safely, how to cross them on their bikes safely, those kinds of things. So all just um one avenue of one of the pieces of the puzzle and how we work to approach traffic safety. And that's it, that's all I have for today.
Wow.
Do you, you include law enforcement, I take it in more?
Yeah, yes, and actually, oh, thank you Commissioner Pop, I'm glad you asked the question, I actually have a handout that talks a little bit more about the T Z D Coalition, um that, which is a state, um it's a state group, but each region has their own coalition, but this talks about the partners that are in there, but yeah, law enforcement. And you guys probably know better than me, cause you're more of the people on the ground, but um EMS, school partners, you know, um public health, health sectors. Many different members are involved, and they do more than just the education events. If you look on that handout I provided you there, they also do engineering, um discussion, policy advocacy, all sorts of different components as well, this is just one piece of that.
Cause you think that it would probably have a, a little larger impact if you had law enforcement there while you were doing it?
Yeah, and they have, yeah, they're there as well, yeah.
Great, well.
Okay.
Great, that's it.
Great, thank you, anything else, Jaclyn?
Nothing else.
Board, anything else for Jaclyn?
Thank you, Jaclyn.
Yep, thank you very much, thank you for everything that you guys do in public health. With that, we're gonna reconvene it, I'm sorry, we're gonna adjourn at ten fifty-five and send it over to the board.
No, we're at uh ten ten, Commissioner meeting updates.
I can go first, I don't have much, I have May twenty-second, um we did a uh B E P staff end, um met with Midwest Machinery or John Deere Dealer, that was a really good visit, uh got a tour. Um and then last night, I had a uh Saint Cloud City Council meeting. They uh uh had a pretty contentious meeting i- in reference to um adding some more beds for homeless. Um so they did not approve that building or anything like that. All they did was try to change the C U P so that it could possibly go down on Northway Drive. Um so um, but yeah. That's it.
I had nothing that I can recall on my calendar.
Okay. Mister Johnson?
Okay, um May twenty-second, I had a fully care board meeting, um just reviewed uh their great turnout that they had at the Pork Chop Dinner in Dwelham, so that was a very good fundraiser for them, of course, going forward. Twenty-sixth, the Commissioner Pop and I had a ditch subcommittee meeting and tried to prepare for tonight's ditch public hearing, so welcome you all back for that at six o'clock. Um also that same day, I had a virtual meeting on Minnesota Rural Counties, basically an update that Grady gave us today, so.
Thank, thank you for doing that.
Twenty-eighth, the Highway twenty-three Coalition Board, um I, I would say a general monthly meeting, with the exception, we're trying to establish our annual meeting, I think, in October. And so far, we've had uh Speaker Daymuth commit to becoming speaker at that annual meeting. Um and then, of course, on the twenty-ninth, we had our bid opening here in the boardroom.
Oh, yeah.
Was for about an hour and a half or so. Place was packed out with contractors, so.
I was on that, I was, I was here for that too.
Yeah. That's all I had, thank you.
Well, going back on the twentieth, I had a library, and we're gonna meet again on June twenty-fourth on the finance, because as it stands right now, we're looking at about an eighteen thousand dollar increase for Benton County. And, you know, they were still waiting on some library aid, but it doesn't look real good there. And then, of course, we had the, the ditch subcommittee, which I think we got some things coming tonight for that. Um I did have a conference call with the executive from MICA, and uh we're gonna have a executive committee meeting tomorrow at eleven o'clock, so. And that's all that I had. Comments, general comments by board members not recording board action, anything? Set committee of the holes?
Well, a couple things, so you're invited to the June twelfth uh open house at Bend River, five thirty, and they're in the shelter, it's June twelfth, five thirty.
Rain or shine, right, Monty?
Rain or shine. Take advantage of that nice new shelter. Um so there was a discussion about having a, either a committee of the whole or a special board meeting on Ju-
So uh if you're inclined to take any, any form of action, formal action, then you, then it probably should be posted as a special meeting. If it's just general discussion, it could be a committee of the whole, so that's something to think about.
Mister Chair, what I was thinking myself personally, is we would cancel the special meeting on the tenth, and we would schedule a cow to have some discussion, and then hopefully make a decision, a final decision on June, at our June seventeenth regular meeting.
I would agree with that.
Okay, so we'll, we'll set, so June tenth, uh start time.
Can, can I make a request? I, I have a funeral at Cam Prabley on the tenth at eleven, so if we can do seven A M in the morning for the cow, I would appreciate that, would allow me to come and head home and then head up to.
What time did you say?
Seven A M.
I would do seven, but I don't know how everybody else.
I'm just asking, because otherwise I'm gonna have to leave. Or not come.
We could certainly start it at eight, but I would do seven.
I could do.
Well, how about uh picking a different day then? How about, how about a different day then? How about just, uh let's see, I know Monday, we're at the A M C District Five meeting, how about uh Wednesday, the eleventh? I think it's a really important meeting.
Available Wednesday, the eleventh.
It's a really important meeting, I think everyone should be there, in my opinion, excuse me?
I would hope Commissioner Kapinski is, but I don't know his schedule.
Um, how, but I give him a call.
Still eleven, work for you?
Yeah, if we do it in the morning, I don't have any meetings till one o'clock in the afternoon.
I've got a twelve P M A M C virtual meeting that day, but we'll be done by then.
Yeah, actually, that'll be MICA meeting.
Yeah, there's a MICA meeting at one o'clock.
MICA meeting at one o'clock. Virtually or in?
You can do either.
Either, I gotta, I gotta be there at that.
I'm answering. So you'd have to leave by eleven?
Yep.
Let's do an eight thirty.
Eight thirty?
Eight thirty on the eleventh?
Eight thirty on the eleventh, okay.
I can too.
Could do eight o'clock that morning.
Excuse me?
Eight o'clock?
I could do eight o'clock.
Your call.
Eight o'clock.
Yep.
Eight o'clock on the eleventh.
Eight o'clock on the eleventh, okay, and we'll cross our fingers that that works for Commissioner Kapinski.
Just to be clear, you're gonna cancel the June tenth?
Well, we never schedule it, we never post it or schedule it, so there's nothing to cancel, no.
Okay.
Yeah, eight o'clock, but hang on just a second, um.
Yes, sir, we are attempting to schedule this cow, uh the tenth isn't gonna work for Commissioner Benoit. So would, would, uh, would uh the eleventh, would the, would the eleventh work at eight? Uh, well, again, sh- she would need to leave very early on the tenth to get to a, a commitment of, on the, on the tenth. So the tenth really isn't gonna work. So can the, can, can the, can you ma- make it work on the eleventh at eight A M? Can't make it work on the eleventh. Monday, Tuesday, Monday, Tuesday.
Well, which?
Monday doesn't work.
Monday, we're at A M C District.
We're at A M C District Five right now.
And we got E C, uh, E C meeting at nine in the evening.
Um if we did Tuesday, Pam, at eight, you, what time would you need to leave, you feel?
Commissioner Kapinski, how early could you start on Tuesday? He says six A M.
Okay, I'm all for it.
Calls are booked.
I mean, I mean, yeah, I would have to, in order to make it up to Cam Prabley, I probably would have to leave by.
So are we good for a seven A M start time on?
I can't do seven A M that morning.
Seven thirty?
Maybe?
Eight?
We could do seven thirty and I could, you could start without me.
Well, I think you should be here.
Everyone should be here.
Eight o'clock.
Okay.
Can we do eight o'clock?
Yeah, I can do eight o'clock, I just can't do seven.
Eight o'clock, Tuesday, the tenth. Okay, cool, thank you, goodbye.
Okay.
All right, eight o'clock, Tuesday, tenth.
Cow. Okay. Any other ones?
No, sir.
For approval, the cows, Mister Chair?
Second.
Most been made in second to prove the cow. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. With that, we're adjourned at eleven oh three. Let's shut some things off here, oops.